We are calling the meeting back to order at 11:45 a.m. on this July the 16th. We will move into our budget workshop, general fund agenda. Our regular agenda, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is discussion of matters regarding the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget preparation, including but not limited to, one, general fund revenue and expenditures, and two, other items needing council direction as made by Tina Dersky. We are now open and ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. And we're going to start off the discussion today with the discussion over hotel occupancy tax. As you're aware, SACAC is dissolving, and so future funding for those organizations that were receiving sub grants from them will now be at the direction of city council. We've invited each of the directors of the four core recipients, as well as a couple of other recipients, to be here today in case you have questions or would like to understand what they do with those funds or how they plan to use them in the future.
Perfect.
The amounts on the slide are what they received most recently as sub grants from SACAC. And so just kind of as a starting place for discussion, the miscellaneous allocations down at the bottom is just a plug to show that we do have currently budgeted and earmarked in the hotel tax budget, that $75,000 that would have gone to SACAC.
Okay. So we'll start with Angelo Civic Theater. Are you here to make any comments? If so, please come forward.
My name is Paulette Schell, and I am the Executive Director for Angelo Civic Theater. Thank you so much for having me today. I'll try to be brief. I've been the Executive Director since October of last year and in nonprofit management for over 20 years. I love ACT, Angelo Civic Theater. We are the oldest community theater in the state group in the state of Texas, tracing our roots back to 1885 Fort Concho, and we're very, very proud of that. We are also very proud of the fact that we are surviving what the country is experiencing in community theaters, which is a post-COVID delayed response. One in four theaters across the country, community theaters, are shutting their doors, whether that's temporary or for good. We've experienced that here with our dear friends at B Theater. And although we are convinced and encouraging them to re-Phoenix from the ashes, the issue right now is that theaters, community theaters, are suffering. But they're very, very important. The hallmark of a healthy community, things like our streets, like our police department, our good schools, all of those hospitals, an active city council, those are all hallmarks of a healthy community, and so is a robust arts community. And community theater is what we do best. We put on six main stage shows a year, and we're increasing that, along with some special events during the year. We revived the Madrigal Dinner, which ASU put on for many, many years. We had our inaugural event last year, and we'll continue that on as the years come. But we are also occupying at 1936 Sherwood Way, a very old building, the Parkway Theater, which is not a historic building, but in the minds of San Angelos, it certainly is.
It is after it's been there for X amount of years, and you qualify, so...
Okay, let's talk. That building is both a beauty and sometimes the bane of my existence, with different repairs that need to be done, air conditioning, you've got to keep them cool to get in there, you know, sewer, plumbing, all of that is something that is a constant, constant concern and a constant cost for us. But we continue on, and right now we just started production of Best Little Whorehouse in Texas, which is our next main stage production. We had 39 auditioners last night, and we anticipate that over two to three weekends of that show, we will see approximately 200 visitors a night, either to see the shows over three weekends, and that could be from in-town, out-of-town. So we bring community together. We bring people into our community. We are a part of what makes this a wonderful place to live. Okay, money. We, looking at the budget, I have no idea how ACT and some of these other organizations have done what they do for the community with the funding that is available, and that is shrinking. I think at one point, through the hot funds, we were receiving almost $20,000, and this last year is 14, which is less than one month operating expenses for us. So we would definitely like to keep it at this level, or at the, we'd ask for more. We'd ask for 20 if we could. And the investment is 6,000 people, we estimate, that come through our drawers, whether that is to see a show or to volunteer, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Questions from anybody?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ballet San Angelo. Thank you for waiting, both of you. You've gone through a lot today already. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members for the service that you do and all the hours you spend in here to keep our city running. My name is Susan Kenny, and I'm the Development Director of Ballet San Angelo. Our artistic director, Erin Lane, is in Colorado, finishing the last portion of her in-person graduate degree in dance education. So I get the opportunity to be with you, and I hope to tell you a little bit about who the ballet is today. You may have an idea about it when it was formed in 1883, to be a seasonal organization just to give the city a nutcracker. We've grown, how do I change? Here we go, to our work today. Dance education, you can imagine beautiful children at the bar in our studios. Yes, that is happening. What you might not imagine is boys' club that is booming, adult classes, also senior work. Our senior dance work during the pandemic, those were our largest numbers. Next month, we were invited by our training base in New York. It's called Dance for PD. We will be at the enrollment event at this convention center, representing Dance for PD for United Healthcare, for a national retiree program. So that's a real success story for us. It started with six dancers in one studio. Now we're in four locations in town, and I have a class at two. So, okay, so dance education outreach, and by outreach, I mean tuition assistance. We do away with any income barriers to study with kids from creative movement up through the pre-professional levels. Also, we do something called Sharing Dance Day, which we have partnered with you guys on, and that is a public health initiative modeled after a program in Canada that is nationwide in Canada. We've directed it toward the San Angelo Independent School District. This coming fall, we will be in all the fourth grade, on every fourth grade campus, working with kids with choreography, and it will culminate into a show where they are the performers at the Brooks and Bates Theater. We heard them, and they said they want it to be onstage. They've participated in different ways, so we're excited about this. And we're looking at the intersection of mathematics and dance, and we have two mathematicians on staff that work at ASU, and so we're excited about this hybrid learning. Okay, outreach, health and fitness, lots of research about why you should be dancing. And the latest research, we participated in a conference in Montreal on neuroscience and dance, and crazy enough, dancing, of course, naturally brings a lot of physical and mental benefits, but also even watching dance releases important chemicals in your brain that balance your mood and improve your health. So, okay, original productions. We are a bit of a dance laboratory. Everything that we put onstage has been created. It's new works.
No sidebar.
Yes.
We're laughing about our inabilities to dance.
Oh, hey.
Yeah.
No, no, no. We can, we can work on that. Our productions, our costuming department, I just want to touch on this, tutus. I don't know how many of you know how to make a tutu, but it's a bit of a lost art. We make all of ours in-house. Our costume director last week was in New York, working with the school, I'm sorry, New York City Ballet tutu maker. The costumes that our casts have onstage have fabrics from all over the world. They're custom-made. They're not ordered out of a catalog, so we're really proud of that. Yes, okay, next slide. Okay, our impact. I've passed a report to you to show you my numbers, to show you my data sources. This past year, we reached 14,925 people. A lot of that is through sharing dance and through our collaborations in town, along with our productions and programs and outreach work. 4,461 of those are youth, 1,955 are people living with disabilities. Our audience reflects, our audience and our students reflect the racial demographics of our city. And the reason why that's important, of course, is that is the litmus test as to whether you're accessible and whether you have an inviting environment. So that is important to us. We employ 17 arts professionals, three full-time, 14 part-time, like myself, and we hire an additional 51 artists, from orchestra musicians to lighting design, backstage crew, professional dancers. Okay. Okay, to numbers, I know this is what you care about. I have tried to demonstrate our growing ability to attract the cultural tourist. Thanks to SEPEC and to their ticketing system, we have good information that we can examine each year, and in 2007, we were unable to collect that. But we've grown from 16 to 22 to 24 is what I'm showing you. And then there are two numbers that I like to look at. It's just sort of fun to think about, the towns and the states that are represented on our ticket buyer roster. It's steadily grown. 95 towns were represented this past year, and 24 states. The ballet books and pays for 53 hotel nights during, last year, that was our count, and our estimated patron number was 383. But the most important thing to see here is that we have a growing ability to do that. This is our goal. We're trying to celebrate the city and bring us forward with the arts. Okay. Our hot, a little snapshot of the hot funding. I've taken the same years and shown what we received and our operating expenses and what percentage that is. And like Paulette mentioned, we are so grateful that you are looking at continuing hot funding after SACAC, but we would really love consideration for growth of that. We had 12.4% in 2007, as you see, and then it's gone down in '22. It was 2.7. And this lands a really large percentage of our operating budget on grants and individual donors, and it's a heavy, untenable burden. So to be the vital ballet that the city deserves, we would really like for consideration of a greater percentage. Okay. Any questions on that?
Good information.
Okay, great. Oh, this is just a graphic. I had fun with the cities. There are all our ticker buyers, and the cities marked on the map. Next, and there's the nation. Probably Goodfellow gave us a little boost there, but...
But they're a part of the community.
Yeah, yes. Okay, outreach. I'd like to end with two slides on outreach. We are a collaborator with some key players in town. Angelo State University, there are two departments that we have a more formal collaboration with. One is the Health Science Department, and our artistic director is, she'll be publishing her thesis. She's working with Dr. Yeoh in the Health Sciences, Science Department, and it's, her project is called Cross Training Effects: The Impact of Ballet Instruction on Flag Football Players, Performance, and Physical Attributes. And they are using all the fabulous equipment at ASU, measuring all of the nuances in the body. And ASU Health Sciences has also studied point work. We've worked together on the Parkinson's work. So that's one collaboration. Another is the College of Engineering, Engineering Department. They re-engineered a Mother Ginger after our grand dame took a tumble in 2021. And so a group of students designed, created, and presented to us, and then it was a project that got to go directly onstage, and they saw it in action. A lot of fun to work with those engineering students. So a couple others I'd like to add here, the Autism Alliance, we work with on every performance. We have an adapted performance with lower lighting and lower sound, and it is free to them the night before we open to the public. Another is Boys and Girls Club. We just finished a workshop with Boys and Girls Club, very successful, high-energy, ended up with a production for them and put them onstage at Brooks and Bates and free to all of them. So we're working really hard to be a welcoming, accessible place that is utilized by more and more people. Okay. Yeah, the last is the Joy of Movement, which I have already touched on, but this is a real success story for us. Our training is Parkinson's-based, and the program is called Dance for PD in New York. And all of the instructors in San Angelo have been directly trained by the founder in New York, who speaks worldwide on Parkinson's. We have a broad application, and we work with all seniors, straight-up senior fitness, surgery, recovery. We've worked everything, ALS, stroke, all of the rest. We have a lot of attendance in four locations now, and, yeah, and we work on, as it says, strength, flexibility, balance, social connection, which is a huge part, social connection, joy, creativity, and confidence, which is all what your dancing can do for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you. Oh, and one book I'll leave with you. We published a book in the last year, and it's a celebration of our community. We put a call out to the public to send us photos, even off your iPhone, of places you love in San Angelo. And we curated them, and we worked with a dance photographer, and we paired them with photos with the body evoking the place. So I'll leave these with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
San Angelo Broadway Academy. Okay, the San Angelo Symphony.
My name is Courtney Mahaffey, and I am with the San Angelo Symphony. I've been with the symphony for 13 years, and I've been their executive director, and I'm now their development director that oversees still all of the finances and the day-to-day operations of the organization. What I provided you all today is kind of a look at what we do with hot funds that we have received from 2017 to present. In this little snapshot, it's going to show you what our artist expenses are overall, highlighting what we spend on orchestra hotel, as well as guest artist hotel. When you look a little bit further down, you're going to see marketing expenses, and it shows what we have spent throughout those different seasons. And then below that, we'll show the funds that we received from SACAC from 2017 to present, as well as what our total operating expenses are to best understand what percentage of that money is actually used towards hotel and marketing. We're a little bit different because the symphony itself, we've been here for 75 years. Our organization has a professional orchestra. Oftentimes, people think that it's all local members that are in the orchestra, but we actually have to bring in 75% of our musicians from the metroplex area. And so what that means is, is that we use the hot funds that we received to go directly back into the hotel that we put our musicians in. And not only that, it goes for our guest artists that we bring in. We use funding that is given to us from SACAC to go right back into the hotels. Additionally, if you look at the marketing expenses, we use it directly to market all over the state and all over the country. I didn't prepare for you all what the symphony does outside of the concert hall, but we do a number of things that are educational programs, as well as special events. What I think is important here, at least on our end of this discussion, is best understanding how we move forward with a consistent formula so that we can work with you all to request what we think is adequate for our organization to continue to maintain what we do at the caliber that we do, using the funding specifically for hotel motel use, as well as marketing use, which is what the statute claims to be for. We do receive, and you can see in this, that we've received anywhere from $25,000 up to almost $35,000 over the years. Recently, in the past two seasons, it's been a little bit lower. What we've received from SACAC, it's been around $24,000. We are asking for $40,000, if that is a possibility. We're also prepared to work with you all to be able to come up with some type of formula to show exactly how it is that we're spending the funds, so that you know that they're being spent responsibly, and would like the opportunity to discuss it further if there is a chance to do that, so that arts, you know, groups know how to approach you all in a better way to make these types of presentations. Do you all have any questions about the information that's in front of you?
No, I think what we want to do is to make the public very well aware that our intention is not to make dramatic changes in terms of this hot tax money that has been allocated. Because SACAC has gone away, we're not going to be in a position of changing. We want to just be consistent with what's been done this year, and does not mean that there won't be changes going forward, but this year, we're sticking with what's been done.
Right.
So, and determining how we manage it going forward.
Will that be then a point where arts groups will come back again next year to make another presentation for funding?
Could be. I think that we'll have a better plan in terms of what we're going to do, but we're just trying to move forward and do what has been done and be consistent, so people know where they're at for this next year's budget.
Okay. Okay. Well, our presentation shows, I think, exactly what we do with the funds and why we're asking for more funds, based on what our budget is, and like I said, what we actually put back into the community that's directly related to what the statute is. We appreciate being able to come up here. We know you guys are busy, and we appreciate you still supporting the arts in the way that you all do and being interested in a dialogue, because moving forward, it's essential to how we're all going to continue to thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to be clear with it, no, you're good, Courtney. The miscellaneous allocations are dollars that have been given out to organizations over the last year, the years before, but some of those organizations have changed, new ones have emerged, and they apply for grants within that allocation. So there have been various organizations every year that might apply for that. All right, so Concho Christmas, Lee.
Lee Fluger, thank you very much for receiving me today. I didn't realize we were on the list for our typically, Concho Christmas had been receiving $2,500 a year. So I guess you can put this back into the fund, and I believe this is the arts side of our, our goal that we started 30 years ago, starting this. It's all private. We have about 300 volunteers, and we have about four staff people that run it. We've, our mission in 1994 was to create an image for downtown San Angelo. That was a result of the RUD Act, which many of you were involved in at the time. And so what we wanted to do was to create a signature event for our community that could draw attention to our downtown, and our committee feels like by this time, 30 years later, and if you see what downtown has done with the help of the mayor particularly, has accomplished that mission. And so we think we're, in terms of that mission, we are finished. So we will hiatus for next year. Or we want to offer the opportunity for economic tourism, because there's a, there's a great amount of tourism right now that's being developed for our community with this event. I don't know how much of the data that I gave you, I gave you about seven years' worth of data.
You know, let's be clear with Lee. Is this when we want him to talk about the future or just the $2,500? Because he's kind of got a dual role in today's meeting, so let's, if you, do we want him to do the whole presentation on Concho Christmas right now?
Or I'll come back. I just didn't know...
No, I just, but you're here, so I'm just asking.
That's entirely up to you. We kind of had this as a placeholder in case you wanted to get into that discussion right now, but it's...
No, let's go ahead, so you don't have to come back. You can go through the whole thing.
Always enjoy being here with you all.
All right. So just do your whole presentation now.
So, so what the committee would like to offer for the city, this has been a, been a private, as I say, a private, nearly totally, now you all have been our sponsor at 2,500 and some in-kind stuff, but basically, this has been a private operation for 30 years. But in order to have longevity for this, if the economic development part of it is important to the community, as you all see it, we want to offer the infrastructure we have, which is about a half million dollars' worth of scenes, et cetera, et cetera, as well as a very solid plan on how to operate this. It runs about $200,000 a year to put it on, and, and those are just great expenses. Obviously, I've put a lot of pro bono in it with my staff, but documented, we're at about $180,000, $200,000. And so the longevity for the community would be an organization that had depth, had security, and had financial ability to carry it forward. And again, we want to offer that, and if, in a transition, we want to offer that to the community and to the board, to the council, to take that over and start running it as a public operation. Many, many communities about the state do have some sort of Christmas celebration that bring in hundreds of thousands of people. We get, we get about 75,000 people a year. In terms of your room tax, which is dedicated to economic tourism, we have about 15,000 cars that go through. Again, how much of this data you have, hopefully you have it all... Again, how much of this data you have, hopefully you have it all through my other deal. But for the community, we had about 15,000 cars a year go through. Of that, we get responses. The mall has given a $1,000 shopping spree. And so about 30% of the people that come through fill out a survey to win this shopping spree. Of those, about 300, right now, we're running about 300 room nights. From, not room nights, people who stay in hotels that go through about 300 a year through season. In prior years, prior to COVID, we were doing 700 to 800 of surveys. So those are documented. If you, if you calculate that based on a full number of 15,000 instead of the 5,000 we received, that'd be about 1,000 room nights is what this brings to our community. And because our event is in the evening, we get a lot of people coming in for dinner and, and to stay, if not overnight, but to have dinner and then go to, go to the light. And you're all familiar with it. I mean, for 30 years, we've all been raised with it, basically. Don't know where I would go from there in terms of where your heart is and what you want to do in terms of our community and making that available to the future generations. But it will take good leadership. It's going to take financial responsibility. And it's going to take that foundation that basically, right now, only the city is capable, in my mind's eye, to supply. Love to work with you on it if that's what you'd want to do. Otherwise, we will, we'll close it down.
I think without a doubt, there's huge want to continue. Do we have all the details worked out in terms of how we do it and how we move forward? No, it's a big task to take on, but it's an important task. And I can't imagine anybody wanting not to move forward and make it a continuing part of this community. It's too important. And we would be amiss if we couldn't figure it out. We can figure it out. It won't be easy because you've had this up for 30 years. So you know all the ups, the downs, the ins and outs, and you can smell what's wrong before anybody else knows there's something wrong. But we need to continue, and your leadership and guidance to helping us get that done would be greatly appreciated. We will lean on you for a lot of things in terms of tell us about this, tell us about that. It's one thing to read it. It's another to understand it.
Sure.
So, don't have the answers today. We do know that this $2,500 is certainly approved, but we know that that's just a little tiny bit of what this is going to take. And so we haven't got that information all figured out. But I think now's the appropriate time to thank you for your leadership and getting this done for 30 years and proving our community because of it. And certainly, the citizens have loved every minute of it. So thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you very much. Anything you need me to do, let me know.
Thank you. Bob Louhart.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This $2,500 actually represents a sub grant that the Fort Smith Privileges have received since 1989 for period music and entertainment at the Christmas at Old Fort Concho event, which has been going on for 42 years. We match that money, more, actually more than match it. We spend about $47,500 a year on creating the Christmas event. And period entertainment, Native American dancers and storytellers, string bands and the like are huge external attraction that make the event worth visiting. And the visitors come from all over the state and the nation. We have statistics from the last 15 years that have unwaveringly shown that between 25 and 30% of the guests come from outside of Tom Green County, which is a state definition of a tourist visit. $2,500 is not a huge amount of money, but it's something that we've been able to leverage and use over the years to help develop the event. And we appreciate your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for what you do, but thank you for continuing to keep the fort up and running and looking as good as it's looking right now.
We have a lot of help on that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, Tina.
So I guess for this item, our goal would be to get direction on if or how to move forward with funding these organizations, whether that's approving some amount today and we go forward and work directly with them on agreements or arrangements, or if you want it to come back at some future date.
My personal opinion is that we, I think I stated it early, be consistent with what's happened in the past, that there's no hiccups. So I think the $75,000 remains and is allocated appropriately, whether you use one year or two years average to come up with that. They obviously applied for these grants before, and there was a process. So a lot of the information presented today is part of the information that was processed before in order to get the money. But they need, I think we need to make sure they understand we're willing to support this. The miscellaneous allocations came from some other grant applications, which we need to figure that out. But we need to move forward and fund these organizations and make sure they know they have this money.
And did you, did you propose to use the exact same amounts or round to the nearest $5,000, such as 15,000, $10,000, $25,000?
Well, what I would say is the following is that this was last year's. I'd really like a two-year average, not a single year, because we don't know. But on the other hand, you have the $7,872 at the end that was allocated to other organizations. And I don't know if we're ready to open that up for people to apply for that money.
Yes, ma'am. I don't think we're at that point. I think with those smaller organizations, according to Mark Stevenson, those were more project-based and they would come as needed. So I think we could still allow those organizations to, if city council were to allow them onto an agenda item, they could come and talk about their projects or request funding from HOT, and we could fund it from there.
But I think we reserve that money as a part of that $75,000. That's my preference. So I don't want, I want these organizations to continue. They're too important to the overall cultural experience in San Angelo. And they have consistently received hot tax money. So I don't think we want to interrupt that, is my opinion.
Just, just a thought to something the mayor said and then something you said, Tina. Would it be possible to take, to round up to the next even $1,000 out of the miscellaneous allocation, since if I understood that correctly, that those were project-based?
Yes, they were. And yes, I think that would be okay based on the amount that was allotted, that $7,800. It wouldn't eat up all of that anyway, but even if it did, there's still plenty of capacity in the hotel tax fund for those smaller projects.
So be my, my suggestion, I guess, to the council, let's just round 15,000, 15,000, 10,000, 25,000, 3,000, 3,000. That'd be my suggestion.
I'd just like to make sure we have like a two-week average because everybody's comparing this year to last year, whatever. So I think to go on one year only is a little, I think you need to look at a two-year average on these dollars. And then if you want to round up, round up, but take a two-year average. And part of the reason some of these organizations receive less is, is there have been new organizations that were added to this, like SEPAK.
So I do have that information in front of me for the last two years. And even with averaging, it would be about the same amount for each of those four quarters.
We're good, just as long as we know that that's appropriate.
And then to the nearest $1,000.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. That's what I needed.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the general fund part of the discussion, revenues, expenditures, and of course, other considerations. We'll start off by talking about the appraisal district. Of course, they set the property tax valuations. The three taxing entities, the city, county, and school districts, set the rates. That's intentionally separated. So this year, I've talked to Tyler Johnson this morning, our chief appraiser. He expects to get certified values to us the 23rd or 24th of this month. Of course, his deadline is the 25th, so we may get them a little early this year. Once we get those, we'll work through truth and taxation calculations and then send the first newspaper notification by August 1st. So we will not have an opportunity to come back to city council before we have to publish a tax rate. So it's important that we get some direction coming out of this meeting on how you want us to go about that. And so.
Which we can do, but we also can call an emergency meeting at some point if we need to do it. So it's not like there can't be another meeting if there's further questions or additional information needed. But we know you have a deadline and we know you need to move forward on, on us making decisions to accomplish the goals.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So moving on to property tax challenges. Of course, you're aware of the 3.5% revenue cap that has been set by the state where the property tax revenue cannot increase more than 3.5% in any one year without going to the voters for property tax rate election. The medical exemption changes, this came about through the state legislation. It's effective this year. That is related to exempt, it exempts equipment that's used in manufacturing of medical supplies from property taxation. That is solely related to Ethicon for us. They're the only ones that applied for this exemption. And that will remove $116 million from our tax rolls and valuations.
$116 in evaluation, but what's the dollar impact on our property tax?
About $830,000. The circuit breaker cap is a 20% cap on properties valued at $5 million or less. That results in a property tax valuation loss of $127 million on the tax roll at about a $900,000 loss in property tax revenue. Again, those two are new legislation that are effective this year. So we can thank the state for those. We're also limited by this.
Do you want to say that a little louder?
Yeah. We're, of course, limited by the over 65 frees. You're well aware of that. But most cities don't have that enacted. That's usually a state freeze for school districts. And then the nonprofit exemptions, of course, related to properties being removed from the tax rolls as nonprofits by them.
And how many, what's the dollar valuation on the nonprofit exemptions?
I talked to Tyler about that. The last significant one was when Shannon purchased the community hospital properties, and that removed about $300,000 from our tax revenue base. Okay, so with, so Tyler gave us updated estimates on July 8th. And with those current estimates, we're looking at a 2.1% increase in existing property values. And new values, we're down about 21.8% from last year. Last year, we had $118 million in new values. This year, 92 million. And then the tiers values look like they're going to be up about 5.8% for a total increase of 3.3%.
Would you go back? I'm not through writing.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So the final property certified valuation for 24 is 7672299621, right? And so your estimation for this year's budget preparation is the 3.3% increase, which falls underneath the 3.5% we're allowed.
Correct. But really, when you're talking about that, Mayor, let me just point out, the new valuations are not capped, as you know. So that line, that's not capped. This is capped. So we're below on existing values by 2.1%.
And we have the option to raise.
And we have the 3.5%.
And, and the numbers that the state, the 3.5 that the state enforces, do we take the tiers values away first or last? Or is it includes, or is it even calculated into the 3.5%?
They're included in the 3.5.
So the tiers at the highest level, not the lower level that goes into the tiers fund? Or the dollars, I'm sorry, the dollars that go into the tiers?
Yeah, the tiers, so the amount that the tiers receives would be included in your 3.5%. So that included with this 2.1%.
But it takes it out of your hands in terms of available funds?
Yes.
Oops, sorry.
Yep, you're correct.
That's all?
Yes, ma'am.
It's taken out of the usable dollars?
Limits our ability to generate revenue in the general fund.
Yeah.
So sales tax was down for July by 4.5% compared with the same month last year. We did have a couple of large audit adjustments this month. Without those, they, the, it would still have been down, but it would have been down by 0.78% instead of the 4.5%. Year-to-date, we're, collections are over the prior year by 1.66%. And we're over our revenue budget by almost $1.5 million.
But that's from conservative planning, not from actual. So, and if you take a look at the prior year, I think our total increase in the prior year for sales taxes, like under 2% as well.
I'm sorry, what was the question? For the prior year?
Yeah. So looking at trend line, this year, we're at 1.66% increase over the previous year.
Yes.
And 2022 slash 23, but actual, the sales increase, actual, was?
We'll have to pull that up. I don't have that on the top of my head.
So I think the point being the following, conservative planning has worked for us and gives you a more optimistic point of view as it relates to the economy. But bottom line is, sales tax only is a 1.66% increase. It's only up 1.66%, which is not necessarily what you call a healthy trending economy. It's only up 1.66%.
They're looking up that number that you requested.
Yeah.
I'll holler it out when I get it.
It's okay.
Okay. The next slide shows the charges showing the FY '24 projected year end. We are still proposing a budget that is less than that, at 3% less than expected actual collections.
So you're saying that the budget is planned at what percent?
3% less than what we expect to receive by year end. And of course, we'll update that in August and September as well in case there are any gains or losses with those months.
Which would be, last year, we planned at 5%. So you're planning, you're projecting for this budget, you're 3%?
Yes, ma'am. And Kimberly looked up that number. She says it looks like it was about 4% last year that we had growth. Okay, so this next slide shows property tax, where we are with current valuations. Again, we know those could change. When I did talk to Tyler this morning, I asked him if there was a chance that it could decrease. He said, "Not likely. If anything, it may increase a little." He's pretty conservative on the numbers he gives us earlier in the year. So with those current existing valuations, property tax will increase by $1.4 million. Sales tax, that's a 3% less than expected actuals, almost a million-dollar increase. Alcohol and bingo tax, not much change there, about $21,000 increase. Franchise tax is decreasing. That's mostly due to television and TV franchise fees.
Which is an amazing number.
Yeah, we're, we're projecting telephone to be down about $52,000 this year and TV to be down about $128,000 this year. And then charges for services, that is mostly due to the implementation of planning and permit fees that were approved and directed by city council back in 2019. We started that first year with those fees in 2020. We took a couple of years off for COVID, and now we're in year three of that plan that council directed back in 2019.
And when do we discuss those? Because I'd ask that we specifically have the ability to go through those increases.
So, and when we discussed that, we said this would probably be the place for that because since they don't, they don't have any requirement to come back separately to city council, they're just included in the. because since they don't, they don't have any requirement to come back separately to city council, they're just included in the budget now. This would be the opportunity for that discussion.
Okay, so is Charlie here to do that?
All right. They were looking at different years, so sales tax for 2023 was up 9%, 2022 was up 4%.
Good afternoon, mayor. I see if I can answer the questions. As you know, we've been working through that, I think it's a five-year cycle, maybe this is the last year and I could be wrong on that.
It's a, it's a three-year cycle.
Three-year cycle.
Yes, and we were directed, we took one-third of the fees at a time. And we were directed to bring the first set to 100% over a three-year period, then the second set and then the third set. So we're in that cycle with, this is the first round of the third set of fees that we're on right now.
And looking at our charter fees, particularly for permits and inspections, this will get most of our fees up to that, between 96% and 100% cost of service. There are still some that are lagging behind that I believe we're going to still be working on over the next year to get those closer to the 100% mark. The planning fees, they were kind of separate from that original three-year plan. We had really talked mainly the permits and inspections. And so some of those fees, we have gone back and done a recalculation of what our costs of service are. And some of those fees, we have adjusted, of course, bringing those up to more in line of what that would cover our cost of service.
And that's my concern, because when we say and said we want to, a third, a third and a third, but the problem with that is assuming X stays X, but X didn't stay X. Because cost of operation increased.
Yes, ma'am.
So, for example, where the first year it might have raised the fee, I'll make, these are made up numbers, they're not real numbers. 25%, but because the cost of operations increased significantly, the next increase could have been a 40% increase in that fee. And that's what I'm interested in understanding, is it sounded great when we did it and approved it in 2019, but a lot of dynamics have changed. And so are we looking at, and that's the reason I want to be very specific about the permits, is are we now looking at a very high percent increase in order to meet that ordinance language that might not have been well thought through at the time?
Well, when we had those discussions initially, I think the goal of city council was to get to 100% of the cost of service for all of those because for that community, it's a part of doing business and otherwise, we're subsidizing.
I know all that.
That service through the taxpayer dollars.
I know all of that, I remember all of that. But the idea was that by doing a third, a third and a third, if you will, and spreading out over three years, you would basically be saying that you would have the same percent increase every year on that three-year window. And the question mark is, what is a percent increase when you're looking at these? Now, because of the cost of, is cost of op, it's one thing if you take X from the first year and said every year it's going to increase $50. But because the cost of your operation went up, did that cost of that permit exceed, let's say, a 30% increase? Did it go up 50%?
So, so we.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, so we do reevaluate, reevaluate those cost calculators every year before we move to that next level. So there will be fees that may decrease and there also will be fees that may decrease. Did I say that right?
Increase and decrease, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's whatever it is, and I think that's why council directed the 33, 67, 100% because we knew that would fluctuate and change over the years. And so we would reevaluate and get to that next level.
That's the reason I'm asking the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Trying to evaluate it. Because it's one thing when you approve it and create an ordinance, it's another when you move into reality. And was what was thought through and created in 2019, do we like the reality of what it says to us in 2024 slash 25? That's what I'm asking. And the answer might be yes, but I want to understand it.
But looking at the percent increase of each of these line items, they're up and down. But I would say the majority of them are closer to the 30% increase or higher than below that. If, if that brings any clarity. While there are some line items that are zero, there are some line items that went down. There are some line items like this is a mechanical vent hood, so a commercial vent hood in a commercial kitchen. The permit used to be $60. The permit is going to go to $100, so a dollar increase of $40 with that being a 67% increase in the permit.
These are the issues that I'm trying to bring up.
And so for that commercial hood system, while it probably costs $10,000 to $15,000 to the contractor and the acumen, the permit fee is going from $60 to $100.
So the expense of it is pretty significant. And I get the fact, only the person who's asking for the permit is the one paying the price. I mean, I get that. On the other hand, I want to make sure we're realistic. Because the other thing we've done is create, I mean, I was just told by my office that, hey, here we come again. We're at that one-year thing, so here comes the backflow. Thing again.
Inspection.
Inspection.
Backflow inspection program, yes, ma'am.
You know, we've added some new fees on top of this, so.
Jonathan just looked at the list that we looked at this year. We evaluated 36, 36 fees this year. And of those, only three increased more than 30%. The one that Erin just mentioned happened to be one of those three.
And that's why I just want to make sure, I don't want to, in this process, be ignorant to the fact that what was approved, and I say this again, what was approved in 2019, in reality, is it accomplishing or creating any additional undue expense? Because here's the deal, we need our businesses to be successful. We need, at the end of the day, for them to be able to make a nickel. And if we keep increasing their fees, the bottom line is less for those people. And so we keep taking out of the hands of the economy that is driving the sales tax and paying the property tax, but the business owners are making less because we're increasing the cost of their operation. And that's what I am just trying to make sure that we're, you know, we're not biting the hand of the person paying for this stuff.
At the, at the end of the day, that'll be y'all's decision.
I know.
We did some contracting out recently for planning reviews because we're shorthanded and we're going to do that. And the cost of that is very expensive. The rate at which the city actually does the work is way cheaper. So in this case, it's up to y'all. If you want to subsidize more, then that's your choice. What we were charged to do is bring those fees back that would cover themselves.
And I get it.
That's what you're looking at.
I just want a thorough conversation about, I understand the challenge, I understand why you did it. And I understand why we started in 2019 with a program of doing this over a period of time. I just want to make sure we're aware that we keep adding more cost burdens to the business owners of this city who help generate the numbers we're looking at. At some point, we can't be creating undue burden on the business community. I just want to make sure we're not doing that, that's all I'm asking. Because if you're in the business of building something and all of a sudden your permits go up by whatever percent, we're asking that person to make less money. Or we're putting the burden on them pricing their product. At the same point in time, we're trying to create affordable housing. But it's hard to do that, whatever affordable housing is, because we keep putting more pressure on their bottom line. And I just want to make sure we're realistic about that. And I get it, the person, only the person applying for that permit is paying for that permit. But see, it's not that simple, because that goes into the cost of doing business.
Yes, ma'am, mayor, and all we want to do is collect the cost of service, that's it. No more than that, just the amount that we calculated is the cost of that service and that's what we want to do. And we definitely don't want to stick it to the, to the business owner or anybody else, we just want to collect that amount.
I will say that we are getting close, closer to closing that gap. We looked at the planning revenues and expenses, planning and permit revenue and expense today. And we're now at a $600,000 difference between revenue and expense. So we are getting closer to where we're at that 100% and we'll start seeing minimal increases, you know, over time.
And that's the key.
Yes, ma'am.
That was the strategy. I just want to know where we're on that process, because we need our businesses to not carry the entire burden. We need them. In a tough economy, you really need them.
Brenda?
Yes, sir.
I remember when we went back and did that, and the whole point was that if it, whoever bears its development, but if, if the city subsidizes it, we're all paying for it.
That's right.
I think, number one, what we want to understand is there's no surprises. And I think by what we're looking at, there's no surprises that are going to jump out and hit anybody. But I do think, as these things develop, I have a building and I've looked at the permits and the fees for the, the heating, air conditioning and the approvals for the inspection. Nothing's going to be surprised, it's more than it is, but they had a couple of years off where we didn't do anything. So I agree with you, let's make sure there's no surprises. But I don't want this on the burden of the taxpayers either. Let's keep it where it should be and be fair, I think about that, but.
Well, that's all, you know, my whole point is, we approved an ordinance in 2019. We understand that. We just need to make sure that we still like the thing we approved in 2019 when a lot of dynamics have changed in this economy and in the world. Are we still happy with it? That's all I'm asking, so to your point, yes, I agree.
Right, then, we've eaten 20, 30% price increases since 19 up to 24.
That's right.
So, you know, as long as there's no surprises, I'm in support of, let's, let's take the steps to where it's fair, but don't make it over, because if it's over, it's a tax, but let's be fair and roll.
Yeah.
It also, we're, we're talking about general fund budget today. This also has a very direct impact on our general fund budget if we're having to subsidize from the general fund budget, to your point. So I'm going to have to agree with what I think I heard Tom saying, let's, let's stay on the path we're on of getting to the cost of service so that we can help take the burden off of our general fund, which, you know, what we've, we've, we lost 1.7 million just in two items that you brought up to us earlier with things coming off the tax rolls. So I would say stay on the path we're on.
And that can be rebit, rechanged anytime, all that ordinance, all we have to do is bring that ordinance back up and rediscover it if it becomes an undue burden and we feel like it's not being fair to the development community. Just need to stay on top of it.
Okay, yes, ma'am. And then other on that line is mostly increases due to projections and interest income. Move on to expenditures for the general fund. I'll start out with the administration line, you'll see that's decreasing by $680,000. That will be offset through all of these lines up above that. We are moving our IT department, they were half in general fund, half in their own internal service fund. We're moving them out of general fund completely into the internal service fund where it makes more sense. So that's just an administrative, like, finance-type change. Public safety is up $3 million, that mostly due to the raises that were granted on January 1st. That was about $2.4 million of that. Another $300,000 is related to overtime. Daniel directed additional overtime for the police department of $172,000 based on raises that have been given in the past few years. And $126,000 for the fire department's overtime as well.
Can you give us?
And that includes benefits on top of the overtime.
Okay. Can you give us last year's percent of the general fund expenditures? What part does public safety make up as a percentage of it versus last year or perhaps the year before? Because at one point, I know we were, 56% of the general fund went towards public safety.
I think that was last year that it was 56%. This year, you'll see on two slides from now that it is now 60% of the general fund budget. Yes, that's public safety in total. The rest of the, the lines here are, in addition to the IT being moved out of this fund, they have the, the lines we discussed, the enterprise funds, charges and increases related to the TMRS and workers' comp rates. So that's the bulk of the changes in most of these lines. The transfers out, you'll see that decrease of 2.3 million dollars. And that, on the next slide, shows a breakout of what's included with that. That includes the equipment replacement that we were transferring out of general fund that is now covered under the rolling debt program, same with the fire truck, that 250 that we were transferring out per year. Debt service, we're proposing to decrease, that debt service was related to debt that was issued for the fire training center several years back. Our INS fund now has the capacity to cover that, so we're proposing to eliminate that transfer out. And then just minor changes for Fairmount and Fort Concho. And here's that slide you requested, mayor, or that you referenced a few minutes ago.
I knew it was in there somewhere.
So that just shows that, go back, property tax represents 48% of the general fund budget, other taxes at 34%. Charges for service represent 11% of general fund revenues. And then at the bottom, public safety represents 60% of the expenditures, public works 13%. And then other admin and transfers included there as well.
Okay, so what this slide shows us, that of the property tax dollars that we receive, 100% of that goes towards public safety?
Yes, and then some.
And then how much out of your sales tax dollars?
$9.2 million.
So $9.2 million out of sales tax dollars plus all of our property tax dollars. And what was the dollar amount that came, that was in the sales tax column the year before?
I want to say we looked at what, $7 million, $7.5 million.
So you've gone 7.5 to 9.2, is that correct?
I'm sorry, mayor, they were talking to me.
That's okay. So we went from 7.5 to 9.2 out of sales tax dollars to cover our public safety, which is police and fire?
Yes.
So with the 9.2 coming out of sales tax dollars, the sales tax dollars projected for the 24-25 budget are, is what?
Let me go back to that, just one second.
I know it's on this, but I'm going through mine, might be easier for me to go.
I want to say 24 million, but, yeah. Just over, you were asking what the sales tax projected budget, just over 24 million, 24,91,000.
So the 24,91,000, 9.2 million is coming out for public safety, leaving the balance to cover all the expense and overhead of the rest of. Okay.
Yeah, Lucy, you had a question.
I just have a question, I'm a little confused here. So the public safety, 60% of the property tax comes out of that general fund?
No, all of the property tax plus 9.2 million of sales tax.
Right.
So if you combine those two things.
Exactly.
That equals this.
That equals 60%.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So in real numbers, the 60% is about $54 million. And the 48% is about 45 million? So the difference between those is the 9 million, 9.2 million.
Okay.
Okay. No, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, so last year, it was 7.5? And this year, it's 9.2?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we've kind of talked about this already. Included in the budget presented for you today is fire department and police department. Overtime increases, which include benefits. And then the biannual debt issue for other needs and other projects as directed by city council. needs and other projects as directed by city council. General fund revenue over expenditure, this is what we call marginal revenue. With current valuations, we are looking at just under $2 million increase in marginal revenue. Street infrastructure fund, this is the .006 cent of the tax rate that y'all directed us to allocate to a street infrastructure fund a few years ago. By year end, this fund will have built up to around $2.4 million. Okay, and so these are some requests that we've had from departments coming into this budget cycle. We have identified funding sources for some of them. And so public safety, radio infrastructure, you saw that in the short-term debt issue earlier today. Fire station land, Chief Brody's requesting about $400,000 to be allocated, give or take, depending on what he's able to find. Animal shelter, $232,000, council has approved that project in the past. That's the temporary shelter. So, and I forgot to mention, these, most of this is being funded through, you'll recall back during COVID, the city had a non-concrete shelter program. Well, after fighting, after finance fought with FEMA for four years, we finally received that $737,000. And so we're proposing to use it for some of these smaller projects that need funding sources. Dispatch flooring and furniture at an estimate of about $200,000 and a second ambulance at $250,000. We've also had requests from Chief Brody and Ryan Kramer for fire truck and equipment replacement increases. And so those are up for council discussion and/or direction either now or in the future.
A couple of questions I have. I thought I understood, and I probably am wrong, that we on an annual basis put money away to help pay for future fire trucks.
Yes, fire trucks is the $250,000 a year. And that is part of the rolling debt program that y'all approved earlier in the regular agenda meeting. Chief Brody is asking for funds in addition to that.
And that's the same thing on the fire station land. We have put away on an ongoing basis, if I'm not mistaken, to buy the land, but we don't. So that, that I.
No, we had proceeds in the past that we've kept earmarked, but it's not nearly enough for what he needs. I don't know if he wants to come up and speak to that. Oh, looks like he does.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Chief Brody. So we do not have a cash flow situation for saving up money for future fire station development. I do have a small little nest egg that we've been carrying over year after year from the.
What's a small little nest egg?
About 170, which is not near enough, actually. So the cell of fire station number five, which was on Garfield, and the cell of fire station number seven, the old stations that was just right off of Knickerbocker, those proceeds were put into an account and been very stingy using that money for some fire station improvements over the years, knowing that we're going to have a future need for fire station land and development and build. So not a whole lot of funding there. So the fire truck allocation, the 250,000, that was established. And of course, this rolling debt is going to replace that in the future, but we do not have one for fire station replacement.
Okay, so of the rolling debt, you're saying the rolling debt piece is covered in, which of these items are covered under the rolling debt?
None of them. The $1.5 million is covered under the additional capacity.
Whatever, what on this list is already covered someplace else? That's what I guess I should be asking.
These are all, we, we have proposed funding sources for all of these, except for the last two. So we've covered, we've found ways to cover the first five. The last two would be up for your discussion. As I mentioned in the regular agenda, we have an additional $732,000 of capacity in that rolling debt slash short-term debt issue. If you wanted to allocate some of that here, or if you wanted to wait and see what your priorities were for that monies, you could do that as well.
I think we should complete the process before we make a vote on.
How to allocate that funding?
Yeah, so, because we're not through with the discussion. So let's, let's say it's up there for discussion. It's not a closed subject, but it's not going to be decided on this slide.
Absolutely.
But it's out there.
That works for us, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions about any of these other projects?
Go ahead, Larry.
Chief Brody?
Do a fast write.
In our discussions during lunch, you indicated you have a focus on a particular property for the new station.
Yes, we have.
Are we still in that $400,000 range? Or can you give us more accurate figures?
Well, don't want to show my cards before we lay them down.
We don't have a contract.
Exactly. So we, we have identified a piece of property and we're currently under negotiations with the seller to determine a price based on value.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments from council at this point? Okay, Tina, move forward.
So this slide is a reminder that we have three meetings in August, and that's largely due to the state requirements for specific dates that we have to set in the event that we would have had to go to a property tax rate election this year. So the record, record vote on tax rate will be on August 8th. That will also be a regular meeting. The budget will be introduced August 16th. That will be a special meeting, meaning that we will probably only have that one item on the agenda. And then 8/19, the 19th will be a regular meeting as well, and that is where we'll formally adopt the budget. And so this slide just kind of shows progress that we've made over the years, and Brian's going to come up and speak to this.
Good afternoon. Brian Kendrick, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. So you can kind of see, we did this as a little infographic to kind of show you where we've been over time. And of course, now we're at the point of where do we go next? What we see, and we can talk about any of these timeframes, what we're seeing is that other organizations are going to, that we compare ourselves to, are going to move between 3.5 and 4% this year. So we would encourage that, if we can, try to make up some ground on that competitive issue. And I can answer any questions or I can keep talking, whatever, however y'all want to.
Well, I think, you know, one of the issues that always comes up is this is the city we live in, this is the city we collect taxes and revenue in, and this is the city and the monies and the dollars and the budget we have to live with. Because no other city has to live with our budget.
And that's a great point.
Only us.
That's a great point, mayor. And I think we spoke about this not too long ago, where back in '21, we presented information to council related to the competitive average, not only of our salaries, but we accounted also for our revenue levels within the city compared to those other cities. And what we found is they're about 7%, we're about 7% lower than they are. So again, that's where I've come up with the recommendation of a 93% goal.
Well, I looked at just the city that's closest to us that shares really probably more with us than anybody else does, and that's Abilene. So our sales tax, their sales tax dollars are 39% greater than ours. That's big. That's huge.
Yeah.
At that, and then their property tax dollars, where we're looking at property tax dollars at 24, 25, at about 45 million, theirs is, for their budget for 2024, 25, is about the same thing.
Yeah, and their, their population is about 30% larger than ours. And they, they, you know, obviously there's some additional burden that comes with that as well, but, you know, to provide the same level of service, so.
But their sales tax dollars.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
A huge jump over ours. And legitimately, it's hard to compare wages when you look at, if you combine the total of those two, property tax and sales tax. And I use Abilene only because I don't really care what goes on in East Texas.
Right, so.
I really only care about.
But, right. Back in '21, what we did was we looked at the property tax, the franchise fee revenue and the total sales tax. And you would think from '21 to '24, it hasn't changed dramatically. So I don't have that updated, and I can certainly update that. Again, it takes a little while, so we don't want to necessarily do that every year. But when we look at that, we also divided that by the population, came up with a revenue per capita, and that's where we find that we were 7% lower than, than those other cities.
And I appreciate the work and effort that it comes, that takes to come up with those numbers. End of the day, we have X amount of revenue.
We have struck, yeah. We understand the constraints of municipal budget.
And I know you do. And so I just repeat that.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate what other cities are able to do or not do, but we don't mirror our city always on absolutely every level. We got to do what we got to do.
Right.
To take care of our city. And we've got to do it within the constraints of our revenue.
Right. And that's the reason I wanted to, back in '21, the whole goal is to provide y'all with another tool to not just look at, oh, we're trying to get to 100% competitive.
Not realistic.
When, when, when it's not necessarily realistic, moving off that 100% to 93% is a little more realistic, so.
It is if you can come up with the money.
I was really presenting that as a, as a tool for, for you all to kind of see the whole picture, so.
Yep, good work.
Mayor, may I add something to the conversation?
Yes, you may.
As we're talking about employee salaries, I think it's important to keep in mind that our police officers, our sworn officers are still underneath a meet and confer agreement that expires in December of this year. So if there's going to be an allocation, whether it's percentage or dollars, towards those salaries, then that should be put into a pot so that we can go back to the table with them and discuss that. I want to point out that does not include any unsworn employees of the department. It also does not include the chief or assistant chiefs. They are excluded from that agreement. And the way that we structured the salaries in the police department under that agreement is a way that cannot be done if that agreement terminates. So we do want to work very closely with them to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the department as we're having this discussion as it relates to police.
So explain again what you said, this, the meet and confer contract expires when?
December 31st of this year.
And if there is, explain what happens, explain the process. In other words, under meet and confer, the dollars that are there are the dollars that are there.
Right, under the meet and confer agreement, we are able to override civil statutes that deal with how police officers are supposed to be paid. So last fall, we allocated $2 million or something to be distributed in a new way across police salaries that focuses more on education and less on, Brian said I was too quiet before, so he's turned me up, and less on just years of service and rank. So it's a system that would not be allowed if we do not have the meet and confer agreement. So as we're talking about salaries going forward, we need to keep in mind that we still have that agreement that's out there. There is a provision that says that we still do need to negotiate salaries for this fiscal year in, under that agreement. And so we do need to start having meetings with the association again to start doing that. But if the agreement goes away, then we revert back to the salary structure that was in place last fall for, so it's going to cause some scramblings and probably some losses to some employees as to how much they're making based on whether they're paid by rank and years of service or if we include education.
So speak to that more black and white, because, yeah, for us.
So the civil service statutes, basically, this is really a very basic explanation of it, say that employees in the same class can't be paid differently from other employees in that class. But there's a process in chapter 142, the Texas Local Government Code, that allows the city to override any of those statutes, to say things like that and create a system that works better for us. It was decided at the negotiation table last year that it worked better to focus on education and pay based on the educational standards that people are reaching and not just how long they're with the department. And so we kind of reworked the entire pay structure of the police department, and it rewarded people based on the amount of education they had and not just years of service necessarily. So some people got increases in pay that if we went back, they're going to lose those increases because if you just consider their rank and time of service, it would not justify that rate of pay. So there's going to be some reshuffling that would happen if that happens, so. Right.
It does expire, that would, that would, that'd be something I think neither, neither side wants to see, so we really need to reengage in that meet and confer process.
It will definitely have some impacts on people's individual salaries, but there's also things like lateral officers that we're trying to hire to improve, you know, the number of officers in our department that would go away. The assessment center process we're using for promotions would go away. There's some disciplinary changes that would go away. We asked for a longer probationary period because training just takes longer than what's allowed under the statute. That would go back to the statutory. And then we have some provisions for part-time officers that would similarly go away if that agreement goes away. So it's my hope we continue negotiating with the police association and come up with some sort of salary proposal based on whatever you guys allocate that benefits both them and us.
Is that clear as mud? Or clear as black and white? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So looking at your graphic, Brian, top left corner, you note that COSE employees were at 91% competitive, or 91% competitive. And you showed that next to October year of 17, yes? Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon. Do I need to repeat all of it?
No, I've heard you.
Where are we today? 17 was seven years ago.
We're 86, if you look at January 24, which, we don't have newer data than that yet. We don't know, I mean, we won't know really more data until everybody goes through this process that we're in the middle of. But we're at about 86.5%, and that's pretty much across the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I was trying to understand how to relate city employees to the police department figure that you offered, which was 86.5.
Yeah, we're pretty much 86.5 across the board within, within a hundred, you know, a couple of hundredths of a percentile, yeah.
Thank you.
So when you calculate that percentage, you know, along the way, we've tried to do things that were on top of salary increases. For example, we created, I think it's two years ago, maybe three years ago, longevity pay. And so the question mark is when you're looking at a percentage, where did longevity pay get calculated into that? Because it is part of what someone takes home, and it, it's probably not calculated into the 86.5% because you're looking at base salary, not looking at bonus opportunities such as competitive pay. And we don't know other cities what competitive pay they have for longevity.
Right.
Last year, we wanted to, the idea was we would give people more days off, so we created two more holidays and added to their, I don't know if you call vacation pay or holiday, whatever, I don't know what you call it.
That's, that's a good point, mayor. So the, the way we usually look at it is we look at base salaries, we compare those, and then we compare like a benefits package. So we look at things like where are we at with our holidays right now? The, the average of the survey, the most recent survey for holidays that we have done was 12.7. We're at 13. That puts us pretty strong, pretty competitive there, a little bit above average, which is nice. When it comes to health insurance, when we talk to Holmes Murphy, we're, our health insurance plan, because we have, we have a bigger group than, than many cities do because we carry some retirees that were, you know, on the plan, we don't do that necessarily moving forward, but those were, that were hired before January 1st of 2000, we're eligible for that, and so we, we carry those as part of our plan. So even though we're spending, you know, an appropriate probably amount of money to be self-insured for our health insurance, the actual benefit is kind of, it's stretched to a larger group. And so we see that. TMRS, our TMRS elections are pretty standard for a city our size, so we're.
You want to explain to. You want to explain TMRS?
TMRS is our retirement benefit. So the city contributes two to one on our retirement with TMRS, and so it's, that's a good benefit, but that is pretty, like I said, pretty standard across the board with cities our size in Texas. And most cities are involved with TMRS. You have to get to like Dallas or Austin or something like that before you get cities with the size that they don't contribute to TMRS.
Okay. Other questions for Brian? Okay.
So we have a couple of options here that we're presenting. One is a 3%, and that's given marginal revenue as it currently stands with current valuations. As you saw earlier, that showed a 2.1% increase to existing values. If we calculate a rate that yields the cap at 3.5% increase to property tax revenue, that would yield an additional $600,000, making marginal revenue closer to $2.6 million. With that option, we're able to do a 4.5% raise versus a 3% raise.
You, one of the items that strikes you when you're going through this entire laundry list of review of revenues, expenses, et cetera, is what we are doing as it relates to trend lines or policy. So if we're looking at our revenue increases, well, let's say many of the salaries are paid out of the general fund, let's just use that as an example, or let's say sales tax, because it's a combination of sales tax and property tax, right? But we know the property tax is already taken up, so it's really, everything comes out of the sales tax column. If we're planning our sales tax down 3%, but our trend for this current year is up 2%, we are increasing our expense, our overhead by a greater amount than the revenue increase. That's down kind of a dangerous road.
Most of the increases in the revenue are due to the property tax. So you saw the number, $1.4 million earlier with existing values, that was the increase. Another 600 would get us a $2 million increase just due to property tax revenue.
And what percent increase?
We also saw almost half a...
That's a dollar increase. What's that percent increase?
At the 2, at the 2 million, the percent increase would be the 3.5% cap for property tax. Half million dollar increase for charges for services. So that gets you pretty close to that 2.6 million.
One of the things that Brian brought up earlier that I think is, is something that before we sign off on anything is worth a conversation, and that is along the way over the past perhaps four years, and Brian, you correct me, is that you feel strongly that this year we should be looking at merit raises so that we don't do a percent increase across the board, but there's, as you said, some people working like crazy and others just riding along. And you want to make sure that whatever we do here, we have a game plan for rewarding those who are, their reviews signify greater reward.
Yes, ma'am. And I think, I think probably the best way to do that is sort of look at it the same way that you're doing for the, for the meet and confer, like allocate the equivalent of a 4.5%. Let me work with Daniel toward how that would split, how, you know, so that we don't, because we've got to move our ranges as well a little bit. So part of that will be like a, sort of a base, base raise that, that would need to be across the board, like you mentioned, and maybe the other portion could be merit, but kind of allow me and Daniel to work through that if we can. I would appreciate that.
So are you saying that, for example, we could set a base of a 3% raise? I'm saying this out loud. I'm not saying this is what you're saying, but I think this is what you're saying. Then the difference between the 1.766 and the 2.613 would be the dollar valuation left over for the merit raises?
I think...
Or not.
I guess what I'm saying is if you allocate the equivalent of a 4.5%, because we really need to discuss through, I mean, we're still having some challenges on recruitment. Hopefully, we're starting to see that continue to have a downtrend, but, so there'll need to be a portion that we adjust our ranges, which will impact everybody, because there's a lot of folks that are, a lot of our folks are at the bottom of the ranges because we have a lot of folks that have just come to the city over time. We've had some retirees, and I don't want to get into too much of the weeds of that. But we have a lot of folks that are at the bottom of the ranges, and so as we move the ranges, not only is it going to affect the, you know, how we budget for next year for those vacancies, but also it's going to impact some of our actual employees that are at that lower range as well. And so we just kind of need to talk through that. There's a little bit of a complication there to try to, you know, discuss that through open, I guess, an open meeting, but, I mean, we can if you want to, but...
I think we would also be remiss not to consider the cost of living increases and inflation for all of our employees, and so I think we'd want to consider that and whatever or however we want to allocate the funds.
Right. And that would be that base, that base amount. And so typically what we've done is, I mean, if you were at 4.5%, probably what I would recommend to Daniel is maybe, maybe we do 4% moving the grades and maybe 5% for those who exceeded expectations, so it'd be a 1% difference. And that's because we still have, I mean, the last several years, we hadn't even had operated to do any kind of merit increase, so at least that's something. It's not huge.
No, but we've been good increases.
Can I ask a question?
That's not true, but...
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Brian. Can police and fire receive merit-based raises?
No, that would be flat civil, well, again, it goes to however meet and confer is agreed upon, but then for the fire department, it'd be a flat amount across...
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Well, most companies, most organizations don't give raises plus cost of living plus, I mean, the inflationary thing. I mean, most companies can't afford to do that. So it's simply, here's the, here's the percentage, all of that's incorporated within that percentage.
Right. And traditionally, we haven't even, I mean, yeah, we've struggled with keeping up with inflation over the last several years, so, yeah, so. All right.
Okay, questions from city council members? Comments? Okay, so seeing none, hearing none, we have a decision to make, so...
Let me, let me make a suggestion for, let me throw it out there for council's consideration. We've seen three, we've seen 4.5%, maybe five, depending on what the appraisal district comes back with in terms of valuations.
That 4.5% is with those right there. That's $619,000.
Okay, unless they go up based on his...
There also could be some movement with sales tax.
Yeah, okay, all right. So here's, here's my thought. Maybe we direct staff to stay below that rate, which would send us to an election, but to maximize raises and give the authority to Daniel to work with Brian, and then whatever, back to the police department, meet and confer, whatever that dollar amount is, they work with that through the process. And then you would bring us that, that back, to the mayor's point, maybe a special meeting, but maybe the first meeting in August. But then that, that will give you the opportunity to set the appropriate rate to get us to those maximum raises without the election.
Okay, so after we work through the truth and taxation worksheets, we'll have what's called the voter approval rate. In the past, since that's become law, that's generally what the city has adopted. That's the rate at which, the highest rate that the city council could propose and adopt without going to an election. And so if you were to direct us to do that, to maximize whatever that value comes in at, and publish that rate on August 1st, you would then see it on August 8th. If it is higher, then what, what we can actually do, you can always back that rate down. Once you've published it in the newspaper, you cannot increase it. So we'd recommend publishing a rate that is at the max of what we would possibly want to do and thereby have that ability to back it down should you choose to do so.
I think what we ought to do, in my opinion, is we ought to vote on the dollar amount today of 2.613,308 million dollars and vote that in as the raises, the dollars we're going to devote to raises. Some people might get a 5%, some might get 4% within that 2.6 million. But what we have seen over the day is lots of other needs, lots of other needs that we have not found funding sources to cover those needs.
So the risk that you run with doing it that way is that you leave tax rate slash money on the table. If we don't have a budget that uses every bit of that tax rate that we're proposing or adopting, it's illegal.
No, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm saying.
In order to adopt a tax rate that is at the voter approval rate and thereby avoiding an election, we need to maximize whatever is there for raises, or we don't, or we'll have to decrease our budget and our tax rate.
Well, what I'm saying is if you leave the raises, the cost at 2.6 million, whatever that dollar is that might not have been, if something goes up a bit, there are many other needs that have been identified within these worksheets that we don't have funding sources for. We can make a decision based off of what those differential numbers are about where to use that money that we haven't identified a money source for.
So let me ask this question. Today, what do you need from us? You need us to set the 3.5 as maximum?
What I'm saying is the 2.6, approve the dollar amount.
I understand that. I'm talking about the amount of tax increase.
Oh, sorry.
So we don't need the tax rate set today or even proposed. What we need is to know what you want to do. I need to know, do you want me to max out whatever's available in the budget for raises for city employees, or do you want to do 4.5% and do something else with the remainder as the mayor's suggesting? I just need direction on what you want to spend the money on. We'll go back, do the truth and taxation, figure out what that voter approval rate is, and do whatever you tell us to do with it.
I think we need to stick with the $2.6 million for raises, depending on how the other numbers fluctuate. We will find a place to put that money because we have a laundry list of unfunded asks, and we can make a decision about whatever that dollar amount is that we are going to apply for those asks that exist because some additional monies have been existed. But in the past, we have done the following. We've designated X amount of dollar amount towards raises, 2.6 million. Some people will get more, some will get less, based off of merits.
So we have two proposals, one from Tommy and one from the mayor. I think as a council, we need to figure out which proposal or choose a different one that we need to do so that we can give some direction to the staff. Tommy has said maximize whatever the evaluation comes back at, at the 3.5, 3.5%, and if there are additional funds, then use that for salaries. The mayor would like to use something similar to that, but take only the 2.6 and utilize any additional monies to fund other things that are unfunded today. Is that my understanding?
That's my...
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
I want to maximize the raises to the employees, whatever that takes. That's what, as one council member, that's what I want to do.
And I want to assign 2.6 million to raises and then find out what the difference is and what we might need to do to fund other requests by departments that are unfunded. I don't know how the, some of these asks by our departments are supposed to be addressed if we don't look at where the money's coming from.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
If, if the values we had today were the certified values, you keep me on the straight and narrow, what you're suggesting and what Tommy is suggesting would be exactly the same thing.
Again?
In other words, the, the 4.5% column that shows up there assumes going to the maximum increase in, allowed to get us a 3.5% increase in property tax revenue, and it allocates that money in the amount of 2.6 million and change for raises. So what you're saying is not that far apart. The question is, what process do we want to use in the next couple of weeks as we step through execution of the budget process?
From my understanding of what they're saying, if there is an increase of the 2.6 million, Tommy is saying to use it for salaries and the mayor is saying we should use it for other things.
Okay, but that won't happen in property taxes.
But it could in sales tax.
Right. And that is not something that is dependent on today's discussion.
It isn't, because we don't know what the property taxes are, I mean, sales tax will generate. We know what the property tax...
And these are estimates, so I'm not comfortable saying they won't change. I mean, we're doing a very rough estimate of the 3.5% increase, so I'm not willing to commit to, to this being the exact number until I see truth and taxation.
That's a great point. Well, we have our estimates, and that suggests that we follow a process where we assume we'll take 3.5 and back into the rate necessary to get that. That process would fund the 2.6 million that the mayor is talking about, and it still leaves on the table the possibility that council would say, we want to do something different with our sales tax assumptions and have it impact expenditures in another way, whether it's raises or some capital or whatever. But on that basis, what I would interpret your requests as direction for finance would be assume the tax rate necessary to generate the 3.5 when you, when you get the values and publish that. And then we'll follow up, we'll have to follow up later for an action item at least, and we'll have the final wrap-up on, did that impact the 2.6? Do you want to affect sales tax assumptions to affect the 2.6 or other expenditures? But the marching order today, I think, based on what you're both saying, is Tina, move forward, assume a 3.5, maximize the tax rate without an election.
Correct. That's number one.
And...
And then number two, 2.6.
And you want to go ahead and dedicate the 2.6 for raises?
I do. Then we know exactly what we're doing. We know the dollar amount, we know the percentage, and it's clear black and white.
And so on that basis, you're, you're the same. Both proposals are the same except the mayor wants to go the additional step to dedicate the 2.6 for raises and restrict that amount. You're, you're doing that to avoid increasing it, is that correct?
Yes. What I'm trying to do is to make sure this list of things on here that are unfunded might have potential being funded, that's all I'm saying. There's, there's asks, there's asks for, I think Chief Brody had some land he needed to purchase, there's fire truck, I mean, there's asks here that we don't have funding sources for. If we expend it all now, we have no funds left. I mean, there's that $700,000 that was way back there, but the asks are greater than that. But I think people should be, feel comfortable that there is this amount of money to be dedicated to raises. We want to maximize the property tax rate to incorporate the 3.5%. So we maximize that. We establish a firm number, 2.6 million, which we've done before, with the total dollar amount to give to raises, and then we look at what other things might come up for conversation for funding.
What I might suggest is...
Let's confirm with Tommy that, that we didn't misstep in that. Is that what you were saying, Tommy? Maximize that rate?
I want, maximize the rate to not exceed the, the rate required to go to an election and maximize raises.
Yes.
And that may, that, that may end up being less than, than 2.6. It may be less than 2.6.
Right, right.
It may be more.
So what I might suggest is directing staff to go to the voter approval rate when we publish on August 1st. When we have our regular meeting on August 8th, we could bring this back and tell you what that generates. You could make a decision at that point in time, whether it's more than 4.5% or a little less, whatever it comes out to. whatever it comes out to, giving, giving city council a little time to think about how you would use any excess. That's just a suggestion, you know.
Well, the number one thing we have to vote on today, number one, is maximizing the rate. That's the number one challenge here, because that's the one where we have firm deadlines and firm publishing.
Yes, and that's easy. I mean, that will be whatever it is per the worksheet. We'll publish that on the first, and then we can come back and talk about any excess on the eighth before we set the property tax rate or the budget.
And that's the number one thing, because you're under deadlines to do that. You have to have published dates and percentages, so we need to go with that. We don't want to raise the tax rate. We want to maintain and keep.
Going, depending on how, I just want to clarify. Depending on how values do come in, it may slightly increase the tax rate since our values are lower than the three and a half percent. But what we've looked at with the current valuations that we have, that would be less than one cent to the property tax rate. And you know, over the past several years, we've given almost eight cents back, so.
So I have a question, Brenda. And Tina and Michael, this is all we use. So we're looking at like an eight hundred dollar or eight hundred K change here. If you look at it, for every percent or half a percent, it's worth about two hundred and eighty-two thousand. So to be honest, we're probably looking at three hundred thousand dollars either way, right? Up or down, if we change this half a percent?
Two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Pretty close, Tom.
Right, pretty close. So quick math, I'm off a little bit there. But I see both sides of that. I, I don't know if we can delay this move until you can see. I'm all for it. The two six, we may not come in that high to lock in the two six. So the two six might be an advantage today, and it might be a disadvantage in four days or five days when we get the number in from Tyler. I don't know when, when that comes.
I would say if city council had a consensus of the four and a half percent, like I said, we can come back on the eighth for you to make that final determination, whether it's a little up or a little down. But giving direction for the four and a half percent to max out the voter approval rate and then come back with that information on the eighth.
Do we have time? I mean, does that fit in the time window?
Yes, yes.
I went three to four and a half on that.
Because we'll publish.
We're so far behind.
We'll publish that rate on the first. That would give us a week before that city council meeting to get everything together, get our ducks in a row, and have that information available for y'all to make that decision on any excess or deficit.
And the only reason I fight, but I'm with you on that, Tom, but the only reason I fight to say the two point six is a fine reason. When you leave it in the hands of a percentage, say in four point five percent, but we're talking about merit raises, one believes then everyone's going to get four point five percent, and they're not. So if you talk in language of dollars, not percentage, then you, those merit raises, some might get three, some might get four, some might get four point five. But that's the reason I talk in dollars. Here's the dollar amount, and if that makes it, because we come in higher at four point six percent versus four point five, that's not a criminal thing. But on the other hand, knowing that it gives people an opportunity to sit down with an employee and write a merit raise and say, you exceeded my expectations. You get this. By establishing a dollar amount, you're establishing a philosophy that here's the dollars. Now each of you managers of your departments get to decide who, who did a phenomenal job and who did less, instead of guaranteeing everybody a four point five percent. And that's the reason you talk dollars, not percentage.
And I'm not saying you guarantee everyone four and a half percent. I'm saying whatever four and a half represents at the end of the day is what we would allocate, whether it's merit, merit-based or across the board. Either way, that could still work with the four and a half percent, whatever that comes out to be when we finally get values.
Yes, but I'm just emphasizing the merit. Listen to me, the merit. So not everybody might see a four point five percent increase is all I'm trying to say.
Agreed.
So we just want to be clear on that. But yes, on, it might be four point six percent. But it is not going to be four point six percent for everyone, and that's all we're saying, just to make sure we're all clear.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we need to take a vote?
You have the direction.
I just need consensus and direction today, and then we'll publish that rate on the first, and we'll see you on the eighth with whatever that comes out to be.
Okay, let's do it. All right, do I need an adjournment? Do I need a motion for adjournment? Still moved? Second? A vote to approve? We are adjourned at one forty.